Evening, everyone. We're calling together the special meeting of the Carson City Council Housing Authority and Success Agency. Today is, what's the date, the 19th?
Twenty.
The twentieth?
Twenty already.
To facilitate viewing of the meeting, our city council meeting will be available to you by live stream on the city's website, Channel 35 Spectrum, and AT&amp;T. All communications of the portion of agenda is limited to one hour unless otherwise approved by the city council. While participating, please state your name and identify the agenda items as applicable that you wish to address. You may email comments to the city clerk's office through the homepage of our city website, You may email comments to the city clerk's office through the homepage of our city website, www.carsonca.gov, or telephone your recorded comments at 310-952-1720. www.carsonca.gov, or telephone your recorded comments at 310-952-1720. There's a box outside of City Hall. There's a box outside of City Hall. You can provide public comments written on paper by dropping them off at the box located You can provide public comments written on paper by dropping them off at the box located in front of City Hall, 701 East Carson Street. in front of City Hall, 701 East Carson Street. Madam Clerk, could you please call the council, success agency, and housing authority meeting Madam Clerk, could you please call the council, success agency, and housing authority meeting together? together? It is 5:05. It is 5:05. May I have a roll call, please? May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council member Arlene Rojas. Yes, Madam Mayor, council member Arlene Rojas.
Present. Present.
Council member Cedric Hicks. Council member Cedric Hicks.
Present. Present.
Council member Joanne Hilton. Council member Joanne Hilton.
Present. Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Jim Dear. Mayor Pro Tem Jim Dear.
Present. Present.
Mayor Lula Davis Holmes. Mayor Lula Davis Holmes.
Present. Present. Could I have a flag salute by our councilwoman, Rojas? Could I have a flag salute by our councilwoman, Rojas?
Thank you. Thank you. Everyone, please rise. Everyone, please rise. Right hand of your heart. Right hand of your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, all. which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, all.
We'll have invocation by our bishop and councilman. We'll have invocation by our bishop and councilman.
Madam Mayor, I saw one of your sorority sisters who happens to be an ordained elder Madam Mayor, I saw one of your sorority sisters who happens to be an ordained elder in the Lord's Church. in the Lord's Church. I welcome you to the platform tonight. I welcome you to the platform tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Thank you, Dr. Lee.
Shall we pray? Shall we pray? From everlasting to everlasting, thou art God. From everlasting to everlasting, thou art God. We're so grateful and we're so thankful to be here tonight, Lord. We're so grateful and we're so thankful to be here tonight, Lord. We thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We know that we haven't been so good and so righteous the reason why you kept us, but We know that we haven't been so good and so righteous the reason why you kept us, but we know it's another blessing that you have bestowed upon us. we know it's another blessing that you have bestowed upon us. We pray, God, as we conduct city council business tonight for the city of Carson, that We pray, God, as we conduct city council business tonight for the city of Carson, that whatever we do in word and deeds, Lord, that you will be pleased. whatever we do in word and deeds, Lord, that you will be pleased. Forgive us, Lord, if we have sinned in any way. Forgive us, Lord, if we have sinned in any way. We pray for our citizens, Lord God. We pray for our citizens, Lord God. We pray for our mayor and all of the council members, and we pray for everyone who's represented We pray for our mayor and all of the council members, and we pray for everyone who's represented here tonight. here tonight. We thank you, Lord, for everything that you have done for us, what you're doing for We thank you, Lord, for everything that you have done for us, what you're doing for us, and what you're going to do for us. us, and what you're going to do for us. In Jesus' name we pray. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Amen. Amen. The first item we have is item number one, is conference with legal counsel, anticipated The first item we have is item number one, is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, city council. litigation, city council. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on our closed session item? Madam Clerk, are there any comments on our closed session item?
None received by this time, Madam Mayor. None received by this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay. She said no. She said no. Report on, got that, announcement of closed session items, Madam City Attorney or was Report on, got that, announcement of closed session items, Madam City Attorney or was it the city manager? it the city manager?
It would be the city attorney, however. It would be the city attorney, however.
Madam. Madam.
Go ahead, Sunny. Go ahead, Sunny. You're on. You're on.
Robert. Robert. No, go ahead, Mr. Roberts. No, go ahead, Mr. Roberts. It's better if you do it. It's better if you do it.
Okay. Okay. Madam Mayor, city council, tonight there is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated Madam Mayor, city council, tonight there is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. litigation. A closed session will be held pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, D2 or D3, A closed session will be held pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, D2 or D3, and E1 because there is significant exposure to litigation in two cases regarding settlement and E1 because there is significant exposure to litigation in two cases regarding settlement with executive employees for your approval. with executive employees for your approval.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to recess to closed session. We're going to recess to closed session. These items should take less than 30 minutes. These items should take less than 30 minutes. Are we looking at 30 minutes? Are we looking at 30 minutes? We should be back by 5:35. We should be back by 5:35.
Let's hope. Let's hope.
Or sooner. Or sooner. We're going to recess to closed session. We're going to recess to closed session. When we come back. When we come back. We're on Zoom. We're on Zoom. Oh, glad you told me. Oh, glad you told me.
You notice I'm following you. You notice I'm following you.
Reconvening to open session. Madam City Attorney, could you report out on closed session items, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council moved in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, D2 or D3 and E1 because there is a potential significant exposure to litigation in two cases. No reportable action was taken. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm going to, before I go into item number one, I'm going to take the prerogative of the chair, and as mayor of the city of Carson, and I have the authority to declare a local public holiday according to the gesture of goodwill and acknowledgement. and acknowledgements of the work and dedication of our city employees. I'm glad this public meeting was called because I was going to call one anyway because I was remiss in saying to my employees, I want to appreciate you and show my appreciation. So I'm declaring Thursday, December 23rd, a special public holiday. City Hall and city facilities will be closed. All full-time and part-time employees will receive Thursday, December 23rd, as a mayor-declared local public holiday with pay.
That's the best kind.
This holiday will be compensated in a 10-hour increment for both full and part-time employees scheduled to work that day. Even if a part-time employee scheduled to work less than those hours on that day, he'll, he or she will still get 10 hours. Any employee who is required to work on Thursday, December 23rd, such as an employee working holiday day camp programs will receive pay in accordance with their memorandum of understanding of benefits and resolutions. I, the City Council and the entire City of Carson, want you to know how much we appreciate your hard work. We've had a trying time this past year with the pandemic, with the odor, and I just wanted to say I appreciate you for all the work that you've done, for all the dedication that you've done, this entire City Council. And instead of breaking it up into five hours on this Thursday and five hours next, I would like our employees to have the entire day off because when we return after the holiday, which is everybody wants to celebrate, we will be ready to go because we have an agenda on the fourth, so I didn't want to break it up that way. And then New Year's Day is on a Saturday, so you have time to recuperate from New Year's Eve. So because of the way the holiday falls. So 10 hours for every employee in the City of Carson, whether they're full or part-time. Can I hear from my colleague?
Second, third.
Good idea.
Well.
I don't think we need a vote. I think we just say good idea.
That's a good idea. So thank you to our city employees.
Yes.
And I wanted to, I forgot to do at the last meeting, so this special meeting was in order.
So a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to all City of Carson employees.
Merry Christmas. Madam Mayor, I don't know. I'm sure all the employees appreciate us, appreciate you, particularly because you were able to declare the special holiday. But they hit me up before I came, like, you think you guys can make it happen? So.
Really?
We made it happen.
Oh, I was just busy last time.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I made the roar that is in the background are the employees thanking you and the council for this wonderful gesture. And so the employees have definitely been asking and inquiring. So we always say, you know, you have not because you asked not. So thank you.
Well, I didn't hear them ask. I just know as a mayor, I wasn't going to not have my first year as mayor and not give a holiday to my employees whom I love very much. So.
Timing is everything. And I think the holiday event for our employees is Thursday?
Twenty-second?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Okay, perfect.
Twenty-second.
So don't forget to pick up my gift while you're shopping on Thursday. Okay. All communications for matters listed on the agenda. Are there any oral communications? Item number two. Consider approving an agreement to allow shippers' trans-
Madam Mayor, did we get a report from closed session yet?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that was it?
No, nothing to report.
No reportable action was taken.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Consider approving an agreement to allow Shippers Transport Express to operate its current use and to expand the use to storage or containers from the port at the 60 acres located site owned, location site owned by Marathon on the south side of Sepulveda Boulevard, just east of Wounded Avenue in the City of Carson. Staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As this, this subject is considering approving an agreement as stated to allow Shippers Transport Express to operate its current use and to expand that use. This item was on the agenda at the request of Mayor Pro Tem Jim Dear and requested a special meeting to approve a settlement agreement to legalize Shippers Transport Express Incorporated, other known as Shippers, to current use and allow expansion for container storage at the entirety of the 60 acres owned by Marathon to assist in dealing with the national supply and chain demand issues. We, we understand that there have been obviously several issues that have partake because of COVID, and this is one where we have the supply, a chain demand. And so it seems that there has been a resolution brought for, and an agreement brought before this council for their recommendation, discussion, and a potential approval. And you should have an attachment of all as such.
Um, is that the report?
Yes, ma'am. And also, Madam Mayor, I believe that we do have one public comment?
Yes. Who's speaking?
Bear with me. My name is Jeanette Gonzalez. I am a resident of this beautiful city that I love very much. Honorable counsel, welcome. Honorable, all of you. I'm going to try to keep it short because I'm a busy girl. Um, I am here as an impacted resident. I have endured refinery pollution for decades. I have endured light pollution on my window for decades. I have endured the channel situation. But I am here one more time to plead to you. Before you sign any agreements on this truck trafficking through our city, if you live towards where I live, we have gone through a lot. People that know me don't know why my voice is changing. The doctor don't know why my voice is changing. I hope I live long enough without having to say what's wrong with me had to do with the environment that I am constantly exposed to. I appreciate everything you guys do. I moved to this city in nineteen, mid-1980s as a young woman, and I have seen this city gone so much better than what it was in the 1980s. And I appreciate all the hard work you all do. Hey, look at the house values that we have currently. I wouldn't be able to move here now. And that's because of all the work that you guys do against all odds. I beg you, do the research on how these trucks are going to impact our environment. And I don't mean just Google it because I don't believe everything I read on Google. Do true research. And yeah, they're going to say, ah, an environmental research takes decades. No, it doesn't. Just go look at some that I have already completed. You don't have to go very far. Look out for completed research on trucks traffic. And you'll be able to read how that impacts our lives, how that impacts our environment. Yes, chain supplies. I'm a businesswoman. I know how that's impacting us. But is my life worth it? Is my life worth those load of supplies? I don't think so. I don't have grandchildren yet. Trust me, I want to see them. So when you make this decision, make it knowing that if you make it to give the big bucks, you might be killing some of us. And some of us may not be able to see or meet our grandchildren. So make a decision considering the facts. Don't let yourself lead by the money or the push that the chains supply.
Madam Mayor, time has expired.
I thank you for listening. And I love you all, but I love my life as well.
And we love you more. Please state your name.
Mayor Lula Davis Holmes. Mayor Pro Tem Jim Dear. Council members Arlene Rojas, Bishop Juwan Hilton, Cedric Hicks. My name is Dr. Leandria Fields Robinson-Cowens. And I am the Vice Chair of the Women Issues Commission, and I am representing those members as well. I am a 44-year resident of the great city of Carson. I have seen many changes in this city. Some good and some not so good. I moved to Carson because I felt it was a good city to raise my children. And I do have children and great-grandchildren. I believe that the mayor and council members have the best interest, would always have the best interest of our children at heart because we live in this city. I am asthmatic. And I know that there will be additional pollution caused by these shippers. And I know that there will be an impact on our environment and air quality. However, I am in agreement if you sign the contract. But I think that we should be substantiably compensated, not just pennies and nickels. We have many potholes in our streets. We have many streets that need to be repaired. So I, it is my belief that if we are compensated substantiably, we can have some of these potholes repaired. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Heidi Romero, and I would like to express my concerns regarding item number two. The negative impact of trucks is quite apparent in the City of Carson. In addition to air pollution, big brake trucks deteriorate the roads that were designed for passenger cars. For example, a fully loaded tractor-trailer weighs 80,000 pounds, 20 times more than a typical passenger car at 4,000 pounds. But the wear and tear caused by the truck is significantly greater. As the heavier weight of trucks pass over the weak spots on the road, the pieces of roadway material weaken, which will cause the material to be displaced or broken down from the weight creating potholes. If the council decides to allow these big trucks to come through the City of Carson, I would like to see the city demand a substantial payment for allowing these trucks to come through our city. And the city should be compensated to allow funds be available to repair our damaged streets caused by the big trucks. These types of trucks are not paying for their full share of their huge contribution to the maintenance needed of our road system. A temporary fix of our road is not the solution, which seems to be the case through most of the city. Potholes scream for long-term, long-term solutions. Our streets need to be paved by following all required steps to assure it is done correctly. All this takes is money. We need the revenue to repair our infrastructure once these big trucks are gone. It would be a win-win situation for all as also the truck drivers need properly paved roads for their safety. Thank you. Good night and Merry Christmas.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Palmer. I'm Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, former Economic Development Commissioner. And I see that the trucks coming in will do great service to everyone that utilizes the truck and its storage and things like that. But I do want to emphasize that the city does need to consider and take into consideration its fair share. As long as we get our fair share, we'll be okay. I know that this is an industrial area already. I know they do some type of storage and shipping already. 60 acres is a lot, and they could fit a lot of storage containers there. It's going to be an increased amount of traffic. And I know that is part of, that is just part of the use. However, we do need to consider our fair share and make sure that we get what we can get to make sure that our streets are quality. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Shannon Lawrence. You know, I think one of the things that, and I'm a resident here. One of the things I think that we should keep in mind is that although our government is in the business of public service, it's in the business of public service. And all these shipping companies that, you know, they are relying on the City of Carson's goodwill to be able to offload their containers to use as storage. But that's still a business transaction between those shipping companies and Marathon. In order for us as a city to do the business of taking care of our residents, we also must think like business people. With that being said, we cannot shortchange ourselves in any kind of deals where the public can benefit greatly. So if there's an optional table to get pennies on a dollar, scratch that, please. Please consider every dollar for dollar in this particular transaction, making sure that the citizens of Carson are able to take full advantage of it if they're going to be impacted in any kind of negative way. It will serve the current residents well. It will also serve the future of Carson well because hopefully we'll be able to use some of those funds and not only repair roads and with the infrastructure that contributes to our parks and programs to continue with the well-being of Carson's children. So thank you for listening to my comments and thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Diane Thomas. I am a 50-plus years resident of the City of Carson. I moved here in 1970, '71, actually. I am, I'm tired. I am tired of Carson being a dump city. We came here 50 years ago, we had the landfill. We are still trying to correct that situation with the landfill. When the county decided to shut it down as a landfill, they walked away. We are still trying to pay to clean it up. We can't afford to make decisions that will leave us holding the bag once again. So now we have the shippers who want to come in, and they have the backlog at the ports. And we know this. We've seen it on the news forever. And we, Carson, want to be a part of the solution. Many cities are being a part of the solution. But we want to make sure that we are not left holding the bag. My concern is this. I know that each and every one of you sitting there who ran your campaign got contributions from many of these companies. And you get them. I have no problem with that. But I hope that those contributions do not make you sell yourself to these companies. Them contributing to your campaign does not mean that they own you. I hope that is not what that means. Simply means that they thought you were a person that they wanted to see on this council because you would make the best decisions for all concerned, especially the city and its residents. So because they may have given you a certain amount of money, I hope you don't feel obligated to do things for them and ask for less than what we deserve. There was a time in my 50 years here where almost every five years, your street was being re-slurried to keep the city up. For years, we have not been able to do that. Now we're slurring half a street. You go down half the street and it's smooth. You go down the other half and you're hitting potholes. And your tires are being destroyed. And people are coming to the city asking for reimbursement for what's happening to their cars. I know that you will do the right thing. I know that you will do the smart thing. As I ditto the things that have been said, go for as much as we can get so that we are not left holding the bag and we can continue to make this city one of the greatest cities in the South Bay area. I want to say welcome to our new council member. We're looking for good things from you. We're looking for great decisions from you as the second woman on this council. Thank you so much and have a wonderful holiday season.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Well, good evening to the entire council and welcome to our new councilwoman. My name is Dr. Celia Hernandez-Vialpando. I am a lifelong resident of what is now Carson. My family roots go here over a hundred years and prior to that into Westminster. So to say, am I invested in this area? Yes, I am. I grew up here. I went to school here. This matter I wanted to address. I also served on the Environmental Commission from 2017 to 2020 and was just recently appointed as an alternate for the commission. I really hoped that the entire commission would have had a chance to discuss this agenda item and to have had the chance to forward our recommendations to the council. I don't know if that's still possible. But as my fellow residents have already raised, I have deep concerns about what an increase to truck traffic in this city means. Back in 2017, when there was a city moratorium, I was dismayed to learn at that point that fifty percent of Carson at that time were trucking industry businesses and warehouses. It seemed a little bit out of balance for me. I don't know what the status is of that today. But I heard then, as I'm hearing now, that some people feel that Carson needs to be more business-friendly. I think time and time again, this city has bent over backwards to be business-friendly and to do the best for its residents. And I'm deeply concerned now because I live near an impacted area where the truck traffic has increased. The potholes, you just need to drive down Carson Street a short ways toward Wilmington Avenue, and you're going to hit potholes. If you go up and down Wilmington Avenue, there are potholes. And in fact, the residents around Martin Street and Vera Street say that at certain times in the morning and late at night, these big trucks hit these potholes, and it reverberates in their homes. Their windows shake. That's especially for the older homes. And I think there is a concern there about what other types of damage that might be causing. Beyond that, I feel my preference would be that I would not want increased truck traffic because I don't know how many more trucks that means. I don't know when it, when they're traveling, where they're traveling. We deal with shortcuts through the residential area right now as it is. But my concern would be the quality of our air. I have been reading some studies that were put out by Harvard Public School of Public Health, UCLA, and other researchers here in Los Angeles County. And they talked about the smallest increase of nitrogen dioxide, NO2, which is the chemical name for exhaust. The smallest increase of 2.5 parts per million results in anywhere from seven and a half percent to up to eleven percent increase in COVID cases and deaths.
Madam Mayor, time is expired.
Time up?
Your time is up. Thank you for coming out to speak. Are they, come on down. We'll hear you after this gentleman speaks.
Good evening. My name is Yuri Taylor, and I'm about a forty-year resident of the city of Carson. I'm also for, since about 2014, been a member of the Environmental Commission. And my issue is also with the number of trucks and the potential for additional harm in this community. We have one of the largest, I guess, number of people impacted by asthma. Okay? And in the information I've read, diesel trucks especially, which are the major way, most of our diesel trucks are powered, put off a significant amount of particulates and harmful emissions that can harm our children and us as adults. And I don't know if you, about 2017, 2018, we were addressed at the Environmental Commission. The Shell Refinery or Shell Pipeline Company are facilitating an ethanol facility right down the street. And they, when they presented it to us, they said there would be a hundred and forty-four additional trucks transgressing Wilmington Avenue, passing our homes, and et cetera, going back and forth to that facility. I just say enough, enough. We've been tremendously impacted in this city by pollution. And I think that I would urge you, urge you, you know, not to pass this. And we've done enough. We've bent over backwards as a community in support of trucking. And it just, the onus has been on us too long, and I just think someone else needs to do it. But let's have some concern for the health and welfare of our kids. I have a grandchild, lives in Carson. She has asthma. I don't know. I don't know. I don't think it's hereditary. But I'm wondering now, she lives right off of Wilmington. Is she impacted by truck traffic and emissions? So thank you for this opportunity, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Fatima Ikvalzavere. I'm also here to speak on item number two. I'm a delegate for this district. I'm a former teacher and a mother, also raising a seven-year-old son here. And I voice very similar concerns to the rest of the people I heard. I live right by a street in Alameda where there's endless trucks at all times of the night. And I'm fearful of taking my son outside. And, you know, the air he's breathing, his lungs are developing, right? His body's developing, and what he's going to get. A lot of scientific studies now show that asthma is caused almost a hundred percent by the environment. And, you know, in this city, we can have disagreements on the refineries. I understand those are stable structures. They take a while, right? We can't just get rid of them. But trucks are a completely different issue. If there's a way that we can prevent pollution, right? We're not saying we're going to change and tie infrastructure. This is just very simple. We're just going to deny something that's a moving vehicle, more of that in our city, right? So this should be a non-debatable issue. So I also, if it wasn't clear, I live in the district. I live in District Three. And not only is it pollution, I also have a compact car. And, you know, when I drive to the roads, my wheels are getting damaged, right? It affects our cars as well. You know, and so we all know Carson is a frontline community. And those that are in these positions, you know, you're sitting on the city council, you have the ability to actually represent our entire community. And it should be a no-brainer to really side on the side of our health, right? Over anything else, I don't know what positive benefit this would bring our city, right? Our health should always be a priority. And again, I'll just emphasize this is something preventable. This would be a no-brainer decision for every single one sitting up, every single one of you sitting up there. And I hope that you make the right decision for our community. Because just like my family, there's other families with children that are being affected by this. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak? Hearing none. We don't have anyone. I now will hear from council members. Council Rojas, do you have any comments?
It's unknown. Page six, so I just wanted to make a comment and to clarify. The resolution would be to have shippers pay two million, which will be extended to two years, correct?
Yes.
That's, yes. That was the only one I wanted to.
Okay, you want a clarification on that? It is my understanding, to staff, that this is a two-year contract. One year, then it automatically rolls over to the second year. And after that, it should not, could you explain to the residents, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And also, we have our city attorneys also listening and can weigh in if need be. But just for clarification purposes.
Yeah. Sure. So the settlement agreement is set up in a way that it automatically extends for a second year. If shippers, if we still have a crisis and shipper wants to ask the city for additional years after that, the city council has discretion to grant shippers an extension after two years as well. But it doesn't automatically extend beyond two years. There would have to be another council vote on it.
Another council vote for consideration. Is there something in?
Yes, and I wanted, I wanted to clarify that shippers has already reviewed the settlement agreement, and they have agreed to it. And in fact, the city has received a signed copyback. There had some changes that they wanted. They wanted the terms to start in January. They wanted some clarifications. All of those were taken care of before the council meeting. And we have a signed copyback from shippers.
Is, a question for me. Is this retroactive from when they were first on the site or what? When we first found out that they were there illegally?
That was one of the changes that they requested. Our understanding is that they started occupying the site in October of this year. And Mr. Kevin, I don't know how to pronounce his last name. I don't want to butcher the last name. But the president of shippers contacted me and said that because they were only occupying three to four acres, and currently that's all they're occupying, he asked if the agreement can be changed so it becomes effective the beginning of the year where they potentially then take over more than the three, four acres. So at this time, the agreement is drafted that it becomes effective the beginning of the year since it's been represented to us that they were only occupying three to four acres currently.
Madam Mayor, could you ask her to explain that a little further? Occupy, what? For how much time? To the city attorney.
Basically, from October till now, shippers has been only occupying three to four acres. That's what they told me at the Marathon site. But going forward, they would like to utilize the entire sixty acres. And since the deal, the monetary agreement is for occupation of entirety of the sixty acres, they asked for the agreement not to go back to October and for it to go forward starting the beginning of the year, January one. So the settlement agreement is drafted starting January one, which would be when shippers would start occupying the entirety of the sixty acres.
Madam Mayor, I have more questions for her if you're ready.
Just a second. Will you finish? That's good. Mayor, for Jim.
Okay, to the city attorney. Isn't this contingent on the Marathon Petroleum Corporation signing a lease agreement with shippers? Because I think Marathon's talking about two years, and then they might want to utilize the property for something else. Is that the fact, or is that just conjecture?
That's correct, Mayor Proton. That's correct, Mayor Proton.
Okay, so.
That's why the term of the agreement is for two years. However, it allows the council to consider and grant another extension should Marathon not proceed with their integration project and should there still be a crisis and should shippers want to go beyond the two years. Then the agreement has a provision that says the council can consider it at that time and possibly grant yet another extension.
Well, that makes sense because if Marathon's going to use it for another purpose, if you do recall, they had discussed the idea only at idea stage to expand their tank farm into part of that sixty acres. And then they withdrew that, that plan. I guess it still exists on paper, but they're not promoting that due to the electric vehicles being sold in California, and the demand for fossil fuels is diminishing. And so they, they don't need that land for that purpose. That's an internal decision of the corporation in Ohio. So I think it makes sense to do a two-year agreement because it's really contingent. We couldn't do more because Marathon doesn't want more. So we can't really, we're wise to just do it for two years and limit it to that. So that being the case, in order to have further in-depth discussion, I will make a motion to approve the settlement agreement that was hammered out by our city attorney, Sonny Saltani, and Shippers Transport Express. And allow Shippers Transport Express to operate its current use and to expand that use to storage of containers to the sixty acres location site owned by Marathon on Sepulveda Boulevard, just east of Wilmington Avenue. For the point of discussion.
Thank you. My concern is this. I want to say thank you to the city attorney. We have been meeting on this for, since September 30th. The agreement that I passed to the city staff until that, and I did speak to Marathon. They said they would only be interested in a two-year at the moment. And when I met with them, there was conversation. And this is what took so long because Marathon wanted to work out what they were going to do. Okay, so when we got to that agreement, I pass this out to the city clerk. And it's to distribute, number one. To recap the conversation that I had with our city attorney. I don't think the city attorney was there. What was Shippers, Marathon, Allen Caldwell. And the agreement that was reached, that was laying around since September 30th, was the one that I passed to all my colleagues. Because originally, this proposal was to give us pennies. And, but from that meeting, there were seven items that were agreed upon. And I want to thank shippers for coming to the table and realizing that we just cannot be the pall guy for everything and not get compensated. Because Marathon, right now, today, for a small percentage of the land, ten acres, they're being compensated at thirty thousand dollars a month. And now they are going to be using the entire site, sixty acres. And if you multiply thirty, I don't know what their calculation is going to be. But it's going to be much more than what we had originally requested. And that was pennies, is the way you've said it. It was pennies for us. We were going to get a hundred and four thousand dollars in PAC fees and about three hundred, three hundred some thousand dollars. This agreement that we're entering into tonight will at least give us a million dollars for two years. And I'm hoping that Marathon will come back to the table and say if they're going to extend this because there's been extensive conversation about what's going on at that site. So that's a good thing. I do want to be a part of the solution because there is a problem. But I'm very concerned about the pollution, the environmental condition that our residents have to face. So several of the things that we discussed on September 30th was, one, distribute a dedicated industrial truck route to all trucking companies with the help of Harbor Truckers Association to ensure trucks do not drive through the residential areas. That's key. We don't want to be like a Wilmington where the residents couldn't even back out of their homes. Two, we discuss, and they agreed to this, use of all CARB compliant trucks entering and exiting the city of Carson facility. Three, which was not on the table, we were talking about pennies. I think the last time this contract was negotiated was for fifty thousand dollars. To pay the city of Carson one million dollars a year, which is to be predicated upon full utilization of the facility. Four, based on the fact that we shall initially store empty containers, which normally arrive and store for long terms, we estimate the import traffic to only be approximately two hundred moves each day and night shift due to the chassis shortages. Most of the dislimited traffic will be for medical supplies. Five, if the chassis supply increases, shippers transport estimates to move five hundred imports each daylight, each day and night. Six, no shippers transport shall pick up containers day and night as they have done in the past. Non-shippers transport, I'm sorry, non-shippers. They don't have any control over that. Seven, the city's concern of creating traffic issues on Sepulveda shall be negated by the new industrial truck route and shall be closed. and shall be closely monitored by all parties and evaluated every quarter. They're going to have someone out directing the traffic to make sure that it does not go into our communities. The primary purpose of this property is to assist the current port crisis. And again, I want to thank Shippers and all the representatives that came out. We've had two meetings. I know Mayor Protam was supposed to be on the ad hoc committee and he didn't make it to one. But these decisions have been laying around on the table since September 30. And we were waiting to hear from Marathon on how they were going to proceed. To the staff, did we ever get the letter back saying what Marathon wanted? A two-year agreement? I talked to Alan Caldwell. He said we should have something in the mail today.
I don't believe we received that. I'll check with the city attorney. I don't know if she's received anything, but I know the staff has not as of yet.
Madam city attorney?
I haven't received any, I haven't received anything from Marathon.
Okay, we need to reach out to Marathon and see if they're going to, because that letter is very key. Because it says they're giving a two-year contract and then they have to work out their internal findings. But again, these are businesses that's coming to the City of Carson. And all businesses in the city should pay their fair share. Some people have been running around saying that I'm not business friendly. I'm business friendly for the right business. And when businesses come here, we should not be the butt of anyone's and saying that we're not being compensated for what it is. And I'm glad that we're not going to beat this to death and that the mayor, Protam, used a new word last reading. We're not going to mock up this. It's going to pass. He said, "We're not going to mock it up."
Which means don't muddy the waters.
We don't want to muddy the water.
I just want to be clear for the record. The terminology of the city being compensated, I know what you mean, but I just want to make sure the record is clear. These are fees that are being imposed for two reasons. One, to mitigate the impact that this use will have on the community. So this is the business paying its fair share to mitigate the impacts imposed on the community. It's not compensation. And two, it's pursuant to the fact that it's through a settlement because the business would otherwise have to go through a CUP process, have an environmental study done. And because of the port crisis and because of the chain, supply-demand crisis, the city is interested in a more expeditious process to allow legalized this use to be a part of the national crisis solution. And one way to quickly get to that, instead of going through a lengthy entitlement process, was to use the fees enumerated in the 2018-2017 Resolution of Compliance between Soro, Shippers, and the city. So then the city can expeditiously give Shippers the entitlements needed through the settlement so they can legalize their use and expand to the 60 acres to be part of the national crisis. I'm clarifying it because for the record, it's important to know why these fees are there. It's not compensation. Cities are not in the business of being compensated. I know what you meant, but words matter in the legal world, so I had to clarify the words. So I apologize for jumping. I just wanted the record to be clear.
That's why you are our city attorney. And I appreciate you clarifying those words.
I think, Sonny, that's what the mayor meant.
Yes, that's what the mayor meant. And I do want to say to my colleague, I know Councilman Hilton has been on phone calls all day, but my message to all of the businesses that come here in the City of Carson, and he tells me this all the time, but we are business friendly. We just need the right business here. And to say that we're going to have a one-time fee of $104,000 development impact fee was just mind-blowing to me. So with that, Councilman Hilton.
I just want to say, I want to personally thank Shippers for coming to the table and acknowledging to pay their fair share, to help mitigate some of the impacts. I know that this is an environmental justice issue, as everybody is saying, but it kind of goes hand in hand. We do recognize that truck traffic may be some level of a nuisance in our community. However, we also recognize that the cost of food is up and the cost of supplies is up by almost 50%. Where Turkey last year cost families $25, now they cost $50. And the supply chain is playing a whole lot and a whole role into that. So this is Carson's opportunity to sit at the table, but also be, pay their fees at the same time. And it's only for temporary use. So I want to applaud Shippers for coming to the table and asking like, you know, what do you think, what do you all think that will be fair? They weren't trying to skate by. They reached out and they wanted to make sure that Carson was pleased with what they were given. So I'm excited about this settlement agreement and looking forward to helping mitigate the supply chain at the port and looking forward to improving our roads for our community and also looking forward to those trucks that won't give off so much gas in our community. And all of these streets that they are supposed to go down are designated as truck corridors by the state of California. Now, if you see them in your community, that's a different story. But Shippers do, they do, they would like to be good neighbors. And if you see their trucks, make sure you reach out to them. Reach out to the city and let us know. They have promised in one of these bullet points that they will have security guards standing at the exit to make sure that they do not turn into the residential community, but get on the truck corridor. So if that's something that they're not doing, we need to know. But let's get it. We can all say yes and go home.
Madam mayor?
Councilman Hilton. Ah, Hicks, I'm sorry. Councilwoman to my right.
You're madam mayor. And I know that we've been discussing this. And one of the key concerns that I had was environmental justice and the environmental impact this will have on our community. And I understand that we are in a port crisis and that I just didn't want Carson to be the city that seemed to take the brunt of everything that goes on at the port. And I know we're in close proximity. I am real concerned about our health and our breathing abilities here in our community. I'm glad that the amount of money has been increased as far as developmental impact fees because the potholes that have been stated by our residents that have come before us, they're here and they affect us as we go through our community. One thing that I did not see, and I hope that, I don't know where that could be done, Sonny. You know, the Alameda Corridor was developed just for this type of process. And I do not see it being heavily utilized. And I know they did alternative routes within their settlement agreement, I think in this document. But again, the Alameda Corridor, if I'm not correct or if I may be misquoting it, but that's the main purpose of the Alameda Corridor was for high truck traffic and even the containers for the rail system up to what I was told, over 100 trains can run down the Alameda Corridor. So we need to utilize those areas. And as the mayor stated, that it could go up to 500 day or night and that it will not be any non-Shippers utilizing the containers and moving them. My last concern is when the enforcement of this, what is the, and I guess our sheriff is not here to give us that information, what are the fees that we can charge them as far as a ticket if they are caught not on the proper route? Because I know, I think Councilman Hilton talked about it. If you see that in your neighborhood, report it to Shippers. But I think we need to report it to our sheriff's department because they are the ones who need to go out and do the ticketing. So we need to make it known to Shippers that if they are caught, there will be a fine and that needs to be paid. So it's a bittersweet process. And I know that because of the pandemic and at the backlog at the ports, that it's a two-year process. I want to keep it at that two-year process because I don't want it to become a norm and everyone kind of sleep at the wheel and next thing you know, it's been approved again. So I just hope that at that point in time, we don't allow that to continue on in the City of Carson. But I understand that we have a port crisis right now.
Madam mayor, I can answer his question.
MPG.
I spoke with Shippers and much more significant than a fine, Shippers has agreed that if a truck driver violates that turn agreement, if they make a left turn instead of a right coming out, they will be banned from the facility completely.
Totally banned?
Totally banned, cannot use the facility.
Okay.
So that's going to be a pretty serious, as much as it's stronger than a fine.
The second, uh...
Let me elaborate on what Mayor Protam said. That's provision 3E, um, uh, Rule 4, Roman Rule 4. It says, "Any truck drivers that fail to comply with these restrictions will be banned from the Shippers facility." So it's in the agreement.
Right, but we have to keep in mind that Sepulveda is a truck route. Women Avenue, Women Avenue is a truck route. If these are trucks that are not associated with Shippers Transport Express, if they're coming from somewhere else, coming from, I don't know, Torrance or something and going to Long Beach, they transverse Sepulveda. We, you know, Shippers is not responsible for companies that are totally unrelated to their operation, of course. So I think we have to keep that in mind. I mean, we don't want residents to think, oh, I see a truck on Sepulveda and Avalon or Sepulveda Main Street. Let's report it. That is probably, has nothing to do with Shippers Transport Express.
And I do want to publicly say thanks to Shippers for stepping up to the plate and making sure that we were made to some degree at a better position so that we're able to take care of the environmental impacts and other mitigating issues that arise by having additional truck traffic within that area.
And also, the mayor and I were on a subcommittee and I did do research into this $80,000 a month. And the $80,000 equals, if I do my arithmetic right, $960,000 a year. So we're rounding it up to $1 million a year. So that's $2 million for the two years. And that extra $40,000 can be used right at that site to put some signage up by our Public Works Department if the city manager deems it's appropriate. But, you know, that could be used for that purpose. But it's an additional $40,000 rounded off, rounded up to $1 million for the taxpayers of Carson to receive for mitigation issues and improving our streets. So having said that, I think we ought to vote on the issue unless we have more questions.
Yeah, I have another statement to make. This $1 million didn't just come about. We had discussed this in September and it was $50,000 on the table. And I had a meeting, and I want to thank Shippers because I was accused of forcing them into something they didn't want to do. But at the end of the day, we have $1 million in our coffers to help mitigate some of the problems. It's not an answer to everything and it doesn't address our environmental issues. I'm quite concerned about that. I also want to point out that during the course of this meeting, talking about Shippers, I had the opportunity to meet with John Picaro. He's in charge of Caltrans. And he did not know that the Alameda Corridor was not a state route. And to our city, acting city manager, there's been meeting scheduled, but the Caltrans will be taking over that, but we need to sit down. That is kind of a dangling port out there that we need to put a close to because they have said they will take care of that Alameda Corridor for us because it is a state route. So we did, not only did we get Shippers, we got something that has been laying around and that's the state taking, Caltrans taking over.
They'll pay for it instead of us having it.
Exactly. And so this has been laying around for some time. It's happening. So I need to close the loop on that. And so without there, there's a motion and a second on the floor?
There is. I made the motion and Councilman Hilton...
And all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Madam city clerk, please report the vote.
Motion approved unanimously.
Any public comments, statements from my colleagues other than say what you had to say?
Merry Christmas. Good night.
Councilwoman.
Happy holidays to everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Protam?
I also want to express happy holidays to everyone, happy new year to everyone. I'm glad that the year is ending on a good council meeting, making progress, making compromise to the benefit of the residents of Carson. So again, God bless you to everyone in Carson and anyone who visits us. Thank you.
Councilman Hicks.
Yes, I want to wish everyone a merry Christmas and a happy new year. But I do have a sad note to make mention. Precious Robinson's husband passed away Friday. And I just got word of it today. So I didn't get his full name and I will give it to the city clerk till we can adjourn in his memory.
And also Isa Palito's sister, she passed.
His sister, yes, 39 years.
So when we get to memorial adjournments, we'll do that. I did want to say, give kudos to Councilman Hicks, the Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation for a fabulous toy giveaway.
Toys galore.
Toys galore. The staff that did the Winterfest. I went down the slide. It should be on YouTube or somewhere. The congresswoman and I went down. I said, "Oh, Jesus." But, and in addition to that, we will be, we have another surprise for some of our young people. We're going to enter them into a drawing where we're going to be giving away another 25, well, approximately 25 bikes to young people. I think kids should be outside playing. That's my personal. So we're going to be purchasing the foundation 25 bikes that will be raffled off. I know the councilwoman had a toy giveaway also. So our kids just have, we just love these kids to death. But here's a public announcement. The Los Angeles County, as it relates to the Dominguez Channel, there was some concern about the deadline being extended for when you could turn your receipts. That deadline has been extended to Friday, December 31 at 11:59 PM. So get your receipts in. The deadline has been extended. You have more time to turn in your receipts. And with that, I'd like to say Merry Christmas. Happy New Year to our staff. I'll see you at the Christmas party. But then I have a resolution. I'll give it to the city clerk, which declares it's a holiday. I guess you'll have it back to me at the next meeting. Without any further conversation, this meeting is adjourned. Councilman?
Yes, his name is Ellis Robinson, Precious Robinson's husband. One of our commissioners.
And madam mayor, add to that, to memorial adjournment, to Michelle Palito. That's the daughter of Ricardo, Rick Palito, and Modesta Palito and also the sister of city employee Isa Palito.
Okay, that's it. See you next year. No?
Adjourned again.
We'll adjourn again.
Yes. Yes.
Come see me tomorrow.